We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Ngariya, wunaguru Bangla miriya, yura da melbu.
Our attendance record, we have apologies from councillors Westerman, Klobuchar and Campbell. There are no leave of absence. We thank you all for being here at eight o'clock in the morning. Item three, declaration of members' conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict of interest they feel should be declared? No conflict of interest, thank you. Item four, reports from council office, we have nil. Item five is the consideration of confidential items in 5.1. Corporate services, 5.1.1, the Waialla Airport upgrade project and the appointment of a contractor. Now, as this is a confidential agenda item, would somebody care to move that we go into confidence, please? Moved councillor Knox, seconded councillor Border. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against, carried, thank you. On that note, I will hand over to the CEO, who will no doubt get Cathy involved. And I'll leave it to Cathy to introduce our special guest over there as part of our meeting. CEO.
Thank you. I'll do first rate to Cathy. See offer of the report, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, members, again for being here at eight AM this morning. The timeframes that we have got associated with this project are critical and to move through our approval processes as quickly as we possibly can make a contribution into us actually achieving that timeline. So, thank you. And also acknowledge that we've got councillors Klobuchar and Westerman online to listen and view the meeting, albeit they won't be able to vote in resolution. And I'll just walk you through the report that has been distributed to you. From a background point of view, as you all are aware, Qantas made an announcement in June that they were transitioning their Q300 aircraft to Q400 aircraft right across Australia. The fleet is changing out in South Australia with the Q400 aircraft expected to first fly on the 17th of February. The impact of that changeout means that the Waialla primary runway is and will not be suitable for the landing of Q400 aircraft due to its current strength. And so we require an upgrade to the runway, to the apron and to the taxiway in order to accommodate the Q400 aircraft coming through. Once and when we were advised by Qantas of their fleet changeover, we then commenced seeking to understand what the scope of works were required in terms of the changeover of the runway to allow those Q400 aircraft to come through. And council on the advice of Qantas engaged Dr Greg White, who is here with us today to provide some technical input into the works that are required. Greg has provided over the last six months a significant amount of technical expertise and advice in terms of what the scope of works need to be and assisted in the preparation of the entire specifications for the works, which we were able to then use to go out to tender to seek a contractor. And I'll come back momentarily on that in terms of the timing of the works is absolutely critical. With the runway, the current runway being of insufficient strength in terms of the Q400 aircraft and the transition of those aircraft to Q400 on the 17th of February, it means that Qantas will need to operate on the under-strength runway for a period of time until such time as the runway is upgraded. It's impossible for us to get the runway upgraded in that timeframe of the February start date. And so in allowing Qantas to continue to use that runway with the Q400 aircraft, which are heavier aircraft, the airport owner, council can provide and issue what's called a concession to the carrier to land those aircraft on our runway. But that concession means that the aircraft need to be at a reduced weight than their fully loaded weight, which means that Qantas can, and they have identified that they can land their Q400 aircraft with 40 passengers as opposed to the 74 passengers, which is the capability of the Q400 aircraft. So they will be operating at 60% of the capability of that aircraft for the period of time that the runway is not of sufficient strength for a fully loaded Q400 aircraft. So with Qantas operating at only 60% of what the capacity is of that aircraft, it's a commercial decision for them in the context as to whether they keep flying. If the runway is not upgraded to the strength whereby the aircraft can be at full capacity, Qantas may decide to pull out of operating from the Waialla Airport. Works of this nature need to also be done in weather that allows for the works to be completed appropriately. Then Greg can talk more about this from a technical aspect. But in weather that allows the asphalt to be laid at no risk from a weather perspective. And so that means that we need to get the work done before winter. So we've got basically from now until the end of May to get these works completed so that Qantas can operate at full strength in the shortest amount of possible time. If we don't get the works done by the end of May, by winter 2025, then the works will not be able to be completed until the following summer, which means then it's almost a 12-month period of time. That Qantas would need to operate at a concession, at a 60% concession rate, which would be commercially unviable to them. In asking the question of Qantas, if we don't achieve this, will you continue to fly to Waialla? Qantas have not answered that question. So it is clear that whilst there is not a, no, we will not fly, there is risk that a commercial decision would be made in that regard. So that's a bit of the background in terms of how we've come to today. So over the last six months, as I mentioned, Greg has been overseeing and preparing the detailed technical testing of the runway in the first instance to understand then what the nature of works and what the solution is in terms of the upgrade works that are required. And then preparing the specifications, which allowed us to go out to tender for and seeking a contractor to do the works. The tender process, and that is the subject of today's meeting, is to work through that tender process, work through the evaluation of the tenders that have been received, and then for council to make a decision to award a contract to the recommended contractor. In terms of, it is important for council to know and understand the procurement process that has been undertaken. This is a $30 to $32 million project. And that is a significant project in anybody's book of projects. We are not aware of any greater project that has been undertaken by the city of Waialla. So it is incumbent on us as an administration and as an elected body to ensure that we're appointing a contractor that is going to be able to deliver the project based on and within the quality that we're wanting, within the costs that we're setting in our budget and within the timeframes that we have set for the delivery of this project. It is going to require very close project management and supervision to ensure that we achieve just that because of the nature of the project. The tender process was encompassed within a governance framework. I might pause there actually and just mention about the funding because that is also a part of the considerations. Council has, as you are aware, made a previous decision to make a contribution into this project of $2.45 million. That $2.45 million has been and was actually encompassed within council's long-term financial plan, but out 10 years and it was in the long-term financial plan for the purposes of a resealing of the primary runway. In 10 years' time, that amount of money, just as an aside, would not have covered a resealing of that runway. But nevertheless, it would have been augmented by funding at that time. However, council made a decision, can't remember when it was, November, September, October, November last year, in terms of bringing forward that $2.45 million in the long-term financial plan to this year's budget to form council's contribution into this project. The cost estimates that we had at the time was in the order of $30 million and we submitted a business case to the federal and the state government proposing that the balance of funding was going to be needing, needed from a combination of those two levels of government. The proposition that we made to both of those level of government was that 50/50. But of course, it was up to them to negotiate in terms of how that funding would come through to the council to get this project happening. In December, you will be aware that the federal government did make an announcement that they were making a contribution of $16.2 million into this project. We've yet to receive formal notification of that funding. But suffice to say, it's been a public announcement and so, you know, the certainty of it there is quite reasonable. I can't say 100%, but quite reasonable. The state government have indicated that they will certainly, have not indicated that they won't fund it. They haven't given us an indication that they will. But all steps that the state government is taking at this moment in time gives the administration very great confidence that the funding will come through from the state government as well. Our understanding, and we've been advised by the chief executive officer of the Department of Infrastructure and Transport that this matter is being considered by the South Australian Government Cabinet on the 28th next Tuesday and that shortly thereafter we will be advised. We have also been in contact and been contacted by senior bureaucrats within the Department of Infrastructure and Transport seeking detailed information in terms of the project and the timelines of the project and the mechanisms that we've got in place around the project. And the nature of those questions that are coming through from senior bureaucrats are indicating to us that they are preparing a funding agreement for council in terms of the funding for the project. And Justin has also been advised by the CEO of the Department of Transport that there is not any limitations or controls in the funding agreement. That's not quite the right word, but, sorry, conditions, yeah, conditions or limitations in the funding agreement. So all indications are that the funding agreement will come through, that it will come through hopefully during the course of next week. And we have provided the South Australian Government with the, not with the outcome of the tender process, but with what our anticipated project costs are going to be. So as I said, the administration is confident in terms of funding coming through. So the next stage of the project is the procurement of a contractor to deliver the works to the quality and cost and time that we have set. We went out to tender, we released a tender documentation late last year in November. That tender closed on the 19th of December. It was a select tender process. We went out to four companies. Those four companies were recommended by Greg on the basis of his experience in the industry. And we held a site briefing for those four companies in the context of the project so that those companies could understand the project more and provide sufficient information to them that their proposals to council were informed on the basis of the conditions that we have at the site. The tenders closed on the 19th of December and on that date, those tenders were open. We received two tenders. I will digress momentarily in that the four companies that we sent out their tenders to consider. One of the companies requested that we use a different company that we didn't have on our list of four as a lead tender and that company that we had on the list of four would be a subcontractor of that lead tenderer. So it was a slightly different arrangement than what we had initially expected and anticipated in terms of the select tender process. On the basis that the company that we had selected in our select process was absolutely the subcontractor for this fifth company, we agreed to that approach. And the tenders that were received were received from that fifth company with the subcontractor and a second tender. So we basically received two tenders for the works. We established an evaluation panel for those tenders and that evaluation panel comprised of Les Jones, council's manager of capital works delivery, and I note that Les is online for this meeting as well. Jody Peroni as our manager of city development and Jody is also online for this meeting. So they are available for any questions from members. Myself as chair of the evaluation panel. And we engaged Mark Booth to also be an independent on that evaluation panel. Mark was, the reason for engaging Mark Booth to undertake that role was number one. He prepared the prudential report for council that council considered late last year in relation to this project. So his understanding of the project was significant. His financial background, his understanding of risk and prudential management matters. And our original person to be on the panel was Grant Jennings as our manager of finance from a financial input, was actually going to be away at the time that we were evaluating the tenders. And so we felt that Mark Booth was a very reasonable and appropriate member of the evaluation panel. And it was also good to bring an independent person into that evaluation panel as well because it ensured that we as the council officers were not, you know, blinkered in terms of our own views. So the councillor Border?
Just confirming, Mark was the one that advised us about the civic building as well, is that correct?
Mark has provided advice into multiple projects for council. The foreshore redevelopment in terms of the cost benefit analysis of the redevelopment of the foreshore and the foreshore master plan. And also the land transaction.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, yeah. And so Mark is well-known to council and is highly regarded throughout the local government sector and knows local government very well. He's also highly credentialed in terms of state government. So the evaluation panel comprised the four of us. And we then engaged Greg White to assist us from a subject matter expert perspective in assessing the tenders that came through. We also engaged a probity adviser, Kiffin Thompson from BDO. As you would be aware, Kiffin is council's appointed internal auditor. And Kiffin also provides probity services to the state government and local government in terms of major projects. And probity services are about ensuring that there is a fair and equitable process adopted for the assessment and evaluation of tenders that are received for major projects. And it was important for us to have that level of governance across the evaluation of this project, given the value of the project and given the extent of funding coming from both the federal and the state governments. We wanted to provide assurance and confidence that the process that the council has adopted and the decisions that the council is making are based on very sound processes that we've deployed across this procurement. And that's important to give confidence to the state and the federal government because that confidence will also then extend into that we are an organisation that is able to deliver on a project of this nature. So Kiffin was our probity adviser and we also engaged legal counsel, Mark Salas, who is senior special counsel at Warman's Lawyers, to provide legal advice in terms of the construct of the construction or the design and construct contract. Any questions? I'll pause there momentarily, any questions? No? So...
I have a question.
Yes, councillor.
Maybe in fact, so you leave the morning. But we've got, we've had no assurance of anybody inviting about getting funding. Anyway.
Not yet, we'll come back to that. And that's got to be part of the considerations of the council and what risk strategies do we put in place to ensure that council is protected in not making a decision and getting itself in hot water because we don't have the funding, so.
We've got no guarantee of getting any funding. We're about to sign a contract for three years.
We will, we will come back to that as part of the discussion and the debate. And that is one of, that is one of the factors of consideration, absolutely, yeah. And so from a project governance point of view, and the assessment of the tenders.
I was just going to flag, I had several questions, some of which I'm answering as I'm listening to you, some of which I'm getting answers through the report. So I'll reserve my questions until the end to us so I can see what's actually relevant and what's not.
Not a problem, thank you. And so the evaluation was then undertaken. And again, we had strict probity around the whole of the process in keeping confidential the discussions of the evaluation panel, the tenders received. Detailed notes were undertaken of the discussions of the panel as well. The process was such that we undertook a first-stage evaluation of the two tenders that were received as to whether or not they conformed with the minimum requirements of council. And that conformance in the context of did they have the necessary insurances in place? Were the tenders addressing all of the schedules and the requirements that we had required them to be addressed, et cetera? That first-stage evaluation identified that tenderer one was not quite as compliant as tenderer two. But the panel determined at that point to keep tenderer one in the tender process to ensure that we could undertake an assessment of competitive pricing and offer. If we had rejected tenderer one in that first instance, then we would not have been considering a competitive field in the context of the bids received. And so we determined to keep tenderer one in the process. What we then did was we did a stage one analysis and scoring against the qualitative criteria. And through that scoring and discussion identified what were the various points of clarification that we needed to go back to the tenderers to ask. We defined a list of points of clarification for each of the tenderers, forwarded those out to the tenderers and provided a week for responses of those questions of clarification. Those responses came back from the tenderers and we then undertook a stage two assessment, evaluation of the tenders. That stage two assessment of the tenders went through again and scored, reviewed the scoring that we'd previously undertaken and confirmed our preferred tenderer was a company called Fulton Hogan. And Fulton Hogan presented a viable proposition to council within a price point and a time point that would be acceptable to council. I'm going to stop there and pass to Greg to talk about the technical aspects of the project and the technical veracity of both of the tenders received.
Good morning and thanks for having me. I hadn't been to Waialla before Cathy and Qantas made contact with me in June last year. And I think it's my fifth trip and so far I'm enjoying it. And I look forward to bringing my wife here for a little extended look around at some point in time. It's an interesting, very pretty, pretty place. The tenders, so as Cathy said, we had two tenders. And the first tender was, they had responded to everything that we asked for in terms of the technical content solutions, the program. But almost, it was almost like they had just sent us back what we asked them to address. So for example, we said, could you please tell us how you're going to do these certain aspects of the project? And they just sent us back a, basically a dot point list of those aspects. They didn't put any detail or context or great amount of information around them. Their program essentially started on the day we asked, give or take. They had a couple of dates wrong, but essentially when we started and then finished exactly on the day that we asked them to finish. And there was not a lot of great amount of detail in between about how they got from the starting point to the end point. And they didn't provide any significant innovations or solutions in terms of details around things that could be smarter or that had the potential to save money. They alluded to the fact that they had some ideas around that, but they didn't disclose what they were. In contrast, tenderer two had a very detailed methodology of how they would go about almost every aspect of the work. There was a couple of questions that, or things that weren't clear and that they were subsequently clarified. But by and large, all the information that you would normally expect for the nature of this kind of project was covered. Their program was extremely detailed. It started on the, on the date that was asked for and was completed a couple of weeks ahead of the end line, which was the end of May because of the weather constraints, as Cathy explained. And you could see that there had been some real serious thought and logic into how they got from the start to the end of that program. They also identified a couple of alternate, a couple that they provided hard pricing for in terms of alternates, in terms of cost savings and time savings. And they also identified, if you like, a shopping list of other potential value engineering opportunities that council could explore if they so desired and wanted to save a little bit of additional money. So there was a few clarifications in there as well and the clarifications were both. Tenderer one certainly included a lot more detail in their clarified tender after the clarification process, which was good, but it was still well below the level of detail that was provided by tenderer two, which was then clarified just to tidy up some of those things that we just didn't quite understand. Did you want me to talk about the alternates as well?
Please, please.
So the alternate offers provided by tenderer two essentially fall into three categories. One of the substantial parts of the project is to reconstruct the apron. So I'm assuming you've all been to the airport and had a look around at some, at some point. There's a large piece of concrete immediately in front of the terminal that the dash eights sometimes park on. That's very old. When we started, we didn't know anything about it. We didn't know how thick it was, we didn't know really how old it was apart from it looks old. And we didn't know how strong the concrete was. So we spent quite a bit of time and effort investigating those things to determine whether that could be kept in place or needed to be replaced thicker and stronger to accommodate the larger aircraft. That was the outcome, that it needed to be replaced. And so a significant part of the job is the removal of that existing concrete and its replacement. And to provide a like-for-like solution, that was originally developed to be a new concrete pavement, so replacing the concrete with concrete, slightly smaller because it didn't need to be as big for the parking arrangements on the apron. And that's a significant cost. And it's also a very long time, takes up a lot of time because you have to essentially split the apron in half. So you can park the plane on one side whilst you rebuild one. And then when that's fully finished and back to working condition, you can start parking. And then when that's fully finished and back to working condition, you can start parking the plane on that whilst we rebuild the, the other side. So it was quite a significant part of the programme. Uh tender, uh so one of the alternatives offered by tenderer two was to rebuild that but in a, an asphalt pavement. So it would be consistent with the rest of the apron and, and the airfield, more consistent. Um a- and so that had a significant cost saving and time saving associated with it. Um part of that also was the, the disposal of the waste. So the original tender was based on um all of that concrete, that old concrete being removed uh and disposed of by the contractor offsite. And we were, the expectation was they would find some smart reuse for it so that it would be environmentally as friendly as it could be. Um tenderer two, the, the, a- and that comes at a significant cost if you can't find a good use for it. And even if you can find one, the transportation cost is always significant. Uh tenderer two offered to crash that up, so it would be almost like uh, like a gravel from the quarry and to spread it around the airside tracks which are currently unsealed. So dirt, dirt roads that the airfield, uh at the airport, safety officers used to get themselves around the airport uh to, to spread it out on that, to provide a bit of waterproofing or weatherproofing to those access tracks. Uh and that, that saved a significant amount of money because it saved all of the disposal and transportation costs associated with that concrete. Um the third major alternate offered by uh tenderer two was to change the runway surface from what we call a stone mastic surface, which is a highly textured surface and it has to be highly textured to provide enough skid resistance so that the planes can brake safely when it's wet, in wet weather, tiny a wet weather issue. Um a- and so that's a relatively new solution in, in Australia for airports. It's been widely used in Asia and, and overseas uh in Europe, uh but relatively new in Australia. Um a- and their alternate was to change that for a, a more traditional surface that doesn't have that high texture and to actually cut grooves in it um to provide the, the, if you like, artificial texture for that water to drain away from under the, out of the tyres uh during wet weather. And that's what you would see if you went to Sydney or Melbourne or Adelaide or most of the other airports.
Is that the same surface that's on the Port River Expressway? Where it's concrete with the grooves, not asphalt and it's a lighter colour? Is that, are you familiar with that?
So it's, it's definitely not concrete. Um and so it won't be a lighter colour. It, it would be, um the Northern Expressway has that same textured surface. Um it would look similar in terms of the grooves being cut in it, but the grooves would go across the runway uh as opposed to along the runway, which is how they usually do it on roads. And that's just to do with the way the tyre treads work on the aeroplanes, that the tyre treads go around the tyre. So we want grooves that go across the runway. And it, it's essentially artificial tread in the runway surface. Um they offered that again at a, a, a substantial cost saving um on a whole of life benefit. So in terms of if you pay a little bit more for the textured surface rather than the grooved surface, will it last longer? A- and based on experience at other airports and on highways in the US, we expect it will last substantially longer. So on a whole of life basis, keeping the textured surface i- is, is advantageous. Um but that's still, yeah, it would came with a significant cost saving. So that's, that's the three main alternatives. Um have I missed anything, Cathy, that you think I should cover?
No.
Thank you.
Any questions of Greg? And councillor border?
Tenderer two, is this the one that said we would like to be the subcontractor or was that the other tenderer?
That's the other tenderer.
Okay.
Councillor Knox?
Got a couple of questions. The um, the alternative runway, the spray sealed runway, is that usable by Qantas while the other runway is being attended to?
Uh so as I understand it, the secondary runway was upgraded to the current Qantas aircraft capability.
Yes, correct.
About two years ago.
Yes.
Uh and so it would still need an upgrade to be brought up from where it currently is to the larger plane. Cause the larger plane wasn't contemplated at that time. The other significant limitation on the cross runway is that it's not lit. Uh it has no lights. So if it was cloudy or rainy or foggy or the plane was late and it landed at night time, the airport safety um officers would have to deploy temporary lighting, which would be quite an impost. Um my, my view is, a- and we tested both, we, I looked at the cross runway or the secondary runway um construction a- and, and we tested it as part of the testing that we did across the airfield in preparing the, the design for this work. Um my pu- my view, my opinion and recommendation is to keep landing the planes on the, on the main runway at that sixty percent concession that Cathy mentioned. Um a- and in a way, if there are any little isolated weak spots out there, that will actually help us find them so that we can address them with some patching or some deeper repairs before the new surface goes on top. A little bit like getting the cake right before we put the icing on. I want to put the icing on the cake and then find out that the cake had a hole in it or, or something like that. So in a, in a way, it's actually not a bad thing to give it a good testing before we then put this nice new expensive surface on top.
So when, when the nice new expensive surface is on top, will there be a period, does it need a period to cure? I know that highways, for example, between here and Adelaide, there's several new sections where the speed is reduced for long periods um or long lengths, particularly between Port Wayfield and uh and Lockheale. Um so they give the ash- the asphalt time to cure. Well, we need to do that with the runway?
So a- airports have, have never, well, clearly we can't reduce the speed because the plane has to land at the speed the plane has to land at. Um w- w- we've never, we've always resurfacing runways at night. So between, say, ten o'clock at night and six AM in the morning. And then reopening them to aeroplanes at seven AM in the morning is ve- is very normal. Um the asphalt goes down hot and then it cools down, uh and that takes a period of time. But usually during that time, they're rolling it to compact it. Then they've got to clean it all up so that there is no loose debris on the surface for when the plane lands. And finally, just before they reopen in the morning, they put the lines, the lines back on, in particular the centre line, so that the pilots have got something to aim at. And that hour or two is sufficient. Um and whenever anybody asks me, I always, I always reflect on that at Darwin. So when I was involved in resurfacing the main runway at Darwin in two thousand and eight, just because of the way their, their flights work, the work window that we had was mid no, uh sorry, six AM till midday. So that way they could get their flights out very, very early and then all the flights from the east coast and, and the south, uh from Sydney and Melbourne all arrive at uh a- a- at your one or two o'clock in the afternoon. And so there you had a six hour window, which meant things were really compressed. And it was the middle of the day. Um and so the, the reduction in temperature of that surface was as slow as anywhere would ever be. Um and there's still been, there's never been an issue with that kind of thing. So I think it's a theoretical issue, but it's never a practical one. To be honest, why, why they slow the highways down, I, I, I don't understand. I, I suspect that's because um, and I don't know about which bit of highway you're referring to, but I know quite often they, they're putting uh chip seals or spray seals o- on those highways. And certainly when they're new, they shed a little bit of aggregate or stones, as you would have noticed. And by slowing the traffic down, it slows down how hard those stones might flick up and hit the next car in the windscreen. I, I know that they slow them down for those kinds of issues, but uh there's no technical need to slow the traffic down for asphalt.
The um, the other thing is, when we took over the um, the airport in ninety one, we had received a grant of money with the, with the airport came a bucket of money, not, not a huge bucket of money, but a bucket of money, which was to go towards rebuilding the, the airstrip. Cause at that time, we believed that the, the subbase was failing. So you're telling us now that the subbase is, is fine or we need to do is the ten millimetre cap?
Like, they, they, there were always the options. Um so when, if you've got a pavement that needs strengthening, you can either do that at the bottom, which means digging everything up and starting from the bottom, or you can put stuff over the top uh to make it thicker so that protects the bottom more, but it doesn't actually fix the bottom. Um you, we, we did significant testing with a falling weight deflectometer, which is, you, you might have seen it around town from time to time. It essentially drops a known weight over a known height and measures how much the pavement deforms uh to give an idea of how strong it is under, under different dynamic loads. Um we did intrusive geotechnical testing, so bore holes all the way through the pavement, took the materials back to the laboratory uh and tested them and then took all of that information and analysed it um u- using normal airport pavement design processes. And m- my opinion and recommendation is that all things being equal, that the solution to go over the top is, is sound. Um it certainly is significantly cheaper and prevents you from needing to close the runway down for something in the order of three or four months, I think, as a minimum. Um if you were building a new runway from scratch, you wouldn't build it exactly like what's out there. You would treat that, that subbase and improve it first. But it is consistent with the vast majority of re- of regional airports in Australia. And, and this approach of going over the top has been used by a number of those regional airports wi- with great success. Um is there more risk in that than digging right down to the bottom and starting over? There is. Um my opinion and recommendation is that uh that risk is so low compared to the consequence and the inconvenience of going all the way down to the bottom and re-digging it from, from scratch uh that it's, it's, it's worth accepting.
What would the cost be to dig down just for reference?
I think we did that estimate very early on.
Triple?
It was, it was in the order of twice, uh so fifty to a hundred percent more than, than what we're proposing. Um a significant amount of the cost associated with the, the, the project that, that we have developed and are, are recommending is, is also to do with the bits that aren't the runway, if you like. So the apron being rebuilt, the air foot lighting all being replaced because it's very old and at its end of its life and those kinds of things. So it's not just thirty million dollars on the runway. Um I, I can't think about what the breakup is, but there is a substantial part in there as well. But that bit that would be on the runway at fifty to a hundred percent. But the bigger cost would be essentially closing it for, for that extended period of time.
Um thank you, Greg, and thank you, members, uh in terms of that. Um the, um Greg mentioned about the third option from tenderer two as a potential savings between the different runways, the grooved runway or the um, or the um textured, thank you, textured runway. And we have not accepted that at this moment in time as a potential savings, given the whole of life benefits of taking the textured runway option. But it does remain with us as an option, as a value management option in the context of discussions with the state, um the state government from a funding point of view. That if it's, if it's necessary to find further savings, then it is there as a, as a, a, a value management option that we can discuss with the state government as to whether we take it or not, based on the whole of life costs.
Sorry, just a question about that. What would be the difference in the lifespan of the two surfaces?
Uh so based on um experience in the US, they estimate that it's at least four years longer, the textured surface compared to the uh, the grooved surface. Um it, the first airport in Australia to do that textured surface was Emerald. So it's quite similar to your airport in terms of the size and nature of, of being a, a regional airport. Um their, their surface is now five years old a- and I think it's probably going to last at least six years longer than the alternate would have been expected to have lasted. I go up there every year in December and when I went up there last December, it was in excellent condition.
So what is the lifespan of a runway?
Uh so there's different aspects of that. So the foundation that it's built on right down deep, we say is essentially infinite. I- if, if you just keep maintaining it, it will last forever. And then you've got the pavement itself, so all the gravel uh in between that sort of foundation and the surface, uh which if you again maintain it and so long as you don't have to upgrade it for larger aeroplanes in the order of forty or fifty years, your airport, your, your, your pavement itself has been there essentially since the war times when it was built, um which is very typical of regional airports in Australia. So it, then you get the surface. And so the surfaces are usually either a chip seal surface or a spray seal, like many of the, the, the out of town roads would be around, around the local area and that would typically on a runway be expected to last eight to ten years. An asphalt surface with grooves would be in the order of ten to twelve years. If you get a bit longer, then that's a bonus. Uh and this, the textured stone mastic surface uh at Emerald, we're expecting at least fifteen.
Uh thank you. And so we have a recommendation before the council of a tenderer who um uh by the name of Fulton Hogan has provided a proposal to undertake the necessary works with the technical skills um and within the cost framework that we have and within the timing that we've requested. The evaluation panel considers that the proposal received by Fulton Hogan is uh the preferred contractor for this body of works. One point to uh raise with you at the moment or, or now is around the contractual conditions that would exist around this contract. Fulton Hogan did present to council some departures from the contractual conditions that were in the draft contract issued as part of the specification documentation. Um um most of those departures are ones that can be worked through and that a position of mutual, um you know, a mutual position can be achieved between the parties in terms of most of those departures, which are, you know, not of any concern to council or to Fulton Hogan. There were a, a couple of departures, however, that the evaluation panel wishes to bring to council's attention. Um although the evaluation panel ex- uh has the view that um uh uh that the matters are not of such significance that it would prevent the contract from being agreed with Fulton Hogan. Um um I will talk through them it just generally in terms of they primarily relate to uh limited liability and degrees of liquidated damages in the event of things going wrong or in the event of delays being experienced um associated with the project. Um the, the risk um that if council pushes back on, you know, uh in absolute terms on these contractual departures, the risk is that uh Fulton Hogan will not be in a position to deliver the project in the timeframe that it needs to be delivered within. And so that then, you know, gives rise to a risk of the, the airport continuing to operate um um post, post May when winter arrives. And that is a, that is a risk that we, we consider as, as being high. That if the, we don't reach a position with Fulton Hogan on these particular contractual departures within a reasonable time, then that is a risk that is there. Um we have um uh found a pathway through which we think uh from an evaluation point of view, from evaluation panel's point of view, is uh managing the risk of uh departure, of um delays and, and things going wrong. Um we believe that that risk is minimal, given the controls that we will put in place, inclusive of project management, uh very tight project management and superintendence and uh supervision across the whole of the project uh to ensure that council is um and not any contributing factor to any delays actually occurring and also to ensure that the contractor is actually delivering on time um as, as required. Um we have also received advice from Warman's Lawyers in the context that um, you know, whilst limiting liability uh in contracts of this nature is not the optimum position that it is um and that there are common law um uh remedies that could be achieved by council, albeit common law remedies in the event of something going wrong would take longer and cost more to achieve. Uh but the risk is, is low in terms of the um, those factors arising. Um so where the evaluation panel has landed is that um originally in the contract, the limitation of liability was set at a value of the insurance value that the company has got, which was fifty million. Fulton Hogan have asked for that limit of liability to be set at the contract sum, thirty million or whatever the contract sum is that, that we end up. Um the evaluation panel considers that that is reasonable. Uh in terms of liquidated damages, that's a figure that gets applied if there are delays. Um and uh Fulton Hogan, uh a- again there, um we didn't set a limit on liquidated damages in, in terms of, of delays and, and when that happens. um, we didn't set a limit on liquidated damages in in terms of of delays and and when that happens. Fulton Hogan requested that that be set at five percent of the contract sum. Um, we, the evaluation panel, have and believe that we can reach agreement with Fulton Hogan that ten percent of the contract sum is actually a reasonable position. To have an have no limiting in terms of liquidated damages is is an unreasonable commercial position to um for any contractor to take. And so those matters, the evaluation panel wanted to bring to council's uh attention. And they're outlined in the report, but as I said, the evaluation panel is expressing the view that those matters um are are not of such significance that it would prevent the contract being awarded to Fulton Hogan.
Good.
Um, I'll be honest, all legal stuff goes over my head. Can you give me two, just really quickly, an example of the uh of both of those scenarios? You you said the departure from contract and then the also the legal litigation stuff. Can I have an example of both of those? Sorry. Greg, do you know?
Uh, so in terms of the limit of liability, um, so the absolute worst case scenario is uh the catastrophic version is the contractor is working at night. They leave something on the runway and the aeroplane hits it in the morning. This is one of those things that the consequences would be catastrophic, but the probability is infinitely small. Uh, in that case, you you Qantas, the the airline, and all the people that were on that plane may sue the council, you you would assume and expect. Uh, and the council would like to pass that on to the contractor because it was their piece of equipment that they left on the on the runway. Um, so in that very unlikely event, um, the contract says that the maximum that the contractor could be liable for would either be the value of the contract, so thirty million dollars, or the value of their insurance, which the contract asks to be or sets at fifty million dollars. And Fulton Hogan are just saying that uh that their internal company policy, without getting a a either a C E O or a board approval, is not to exceed the thirty million dollars, so the 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 limit of the the contract. So really talking about the exposure of that in that gap between thirty million and and fifty million for these things that are horrendous to contemplate, but theoretically um are possible. So that's the limit of liability.
And then council has insurance to cover that kind of thing anyway. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, the mutual liability scheme um uh exists for council's coverage in that respect.
Uh, so the other the other issue was liquidated damages, which essentially says the contract will will have a completion date of, let's say, end of May. Particularly for the asphalt works, there'll be some other stuff that go goes on afterwards. But for the purpose of the discussion, the end of May is good because that's kind of the start of winter. That's what we want. Um, i- if they are late by a day, then council will incur some costs because it will have people out there supervising that additional day of work. Uh, they'll have somebody administering the contract for an additional day. They'll have their own internal people deployed on that contract in terms of project management and uh and the the supervisors, the airport safety officers. Uh, so there's some costs there. So that's what we call liquidated damage. So every day they're late, they have to compensate by a contractual reduction in their price uh for that extra day. Um, the original contract says, if if you're late by a year, you just keep racking that up. Um, Fulton Hogan's view was that should be limited to five percent. That's what they said is is relatively normal in their industry. Um, a- and so five percent would be equivalent, I think we worked out to about ninety days.
Ninety-six days.
So that would get you then from the end of May to end of May, June, July, August, which is still winter. So in my mind, ten percent was quite a reasonable um outcome because that gets you back to summer. So in the absolute worst case, if something catastrophically broke with their asphalt plant or one of their pieces of equipment and they had to completely stop work and they couldn't finish it before winter, then then under the ten percent um provision, they would have plenty of time to come back and finish it before summer, whi- which is you not good, but it's better than better better than um.
Thanks for that. It goes over my head, so it's easier if I have to ask for an example.
Mine too sometimes.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm about to agree or not agree to something and I'd like to completely understand it before I do that.
Councilor Knox?
I've got a few questions, um, pretty easy ones, I think, though. I guess we're looking for around about eleven million dollars from the state. We're pretty confident we're going to get that?
Yes.
Okay.
It it's probably a bit more than eleven million. It's probably more in the order of thirteen.
Okay.
See ya.
So a key one, um. We, as Kathy said, we submitted the business case to both the federal government and the state governments, saying that we needed them to basically, we suggested fifty fifty split with the balance of the total project costs um less what council was contributing. So if you work on about roughly uh thirty mil, um, we put in two and then uh the balance was meant to be split. We know that the state government has been negotiating, and I emphasise that word heavily, negotiating with the federal government about what the respective contributions uh would be. Um, and I've circulated to you via email the uh media release issued by Minister Catherine King and Senator um Karen Brogan regarding the sixteen point two million dollars that the federal government has committed. The intention, um, based on discussions ads with um minister and um uh Minister Kuzentonis and uh his chief at um chief of staff was that there was to be a joint announcement by the federal and state labour governments um early in January, um with regards to their respective funding. Um, federal government committed the funding, um, but they didn't do an initial announcement of that funding. It was basically put into one of their budget papers or or whatever. I'm not sure what what particular document it is. And um uh the local member for the seat of grave, Rowan Ramsay, founds that that the commitment had been made by the federal government uh for that sixteen point two million dollars. And he came out and essentially announced um the the funding, um, noting that he's liberal and it was the Labour government. So uh the Labour um senator then and minister then released the media release, which you have now got, which on the first line, I think, says something along the lines that Warrington is one of the most strategic and important regional airports in Australia. Um, the only reason that the federal government has committed that funding is that there has been an agreement reached between the federal government and the state governments to jointly fund. So the, um, however, because of the quantum of dollars that are involved, it's not something that the minister can um do of his own accord. It has to go to cabinet. So it's it is frustrating that right here, right now, we're sitting in front of you. We don't have confirmation of that funding, but um we have had uh informal, or use that word, informal assurances from the minister himself, uh from the C E O of DIT, uh from the chief of staff of the minister uh that the funding is forthcoming. Um, and it's just a question of getting the cabinet approval to en- enable someone to announce that the funding has been committed. So when we say we're confident that funding is coming, um, you know, we're ninety nine point nine percent confident. We don't know the exact quantum, but we do know that the state governments asked for more than thirty mil when they started their discussions with this the federal government. They they sought um federal government funding for thirty-two mil to allow for some contingency. Um, so, um, you know, we've got a high level of confidence that the funding will be made available. It's unfortunately machinery of governments just not um delivered the um outcome that we need, which is confirmation of that funding at this point in time.
On the basis of that then, will Fulton Hogan Hogan actually wait until we get that approval? Or we're going to go ahead with it in the meantime, and if it doesn't happen, we carry the cost?
Do you? Um, I'll start, but then I'll hand to to Kathy. Um, with the recommendations that are put before you, um, at present, it's black and white, which is to award a contract to to Fulton Hogan um to do the work. Um, we've got some extra words that we think we'd need to put into the recommendation or the res- resolution of council, which makes that decision to uh um award the contract subject to confirmation of funding from the federal and state government. So from a prudential management point of view, um, if someone ever asks a question, why did you bid a contract and you 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 shouldn't have money, your resolution will be very clear that the resolution is contingent to that funding. Having said that, um, we will need to discuss with Fulton Hogan how they can progress with the work because we don't want to literally sit and basically waste seven days, ten days, fifteen days, waiting for mach- the machinery of federal and state government to cough up a a funding agreement, noting that Kathy and I have been chasing the federal, oh no, sorry, the state governments just about on a daily basis for the last couple of weeks. So we need the funding agreement. We need the funding agreements and um we still haven't got it. Um, I'll hand back to Kathy to talk practically about how Fulton Hogan can progress with some of the work without um exposing us to uh the concern which they they commit to a level expenditure which we don't have uh funding to to meet. Kathy?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, eh, from a practical point of view, at the conclusion of this meeting and subject to the decision of the council, our intention is to contact Fulton Hogan uh today to advise them that they are the preferred tenderer and that we would like to finalize the contractual negotiations this week. Of course, we won't actually execute a contract unless those contractual negotiations are completed. And during that meeting, we will talk to them uh in relation to the funding scenario that we have before us and that council has before us. Um, but some of the options, and we have had a discussion with Mark Salas from Warman's Lawyers in relation to this. Some of the options are is that we enter into an um a a an early works contract with Fulton Hogan to commence some of the very early works. Some of the early works are the design works, the conclusion and the finalisation of the design. Um, I'll just make mention that the contract that we'll be entering into with Fulton Hogan is a design and construct contract. That is an element then of design work that Fulton Hogan need to do in relation to the works to be undertaken. Greg has prepared the design to approximately eighty percent of solution. And there is further works that need to be done by Fulton Hogan in terms of that design. That design works needs to occur at the commencement of the project. And so uh we will talk with Fulton Hogan about how this might be staged from an early works point of view so that it doesn't expose council to a full thirty million dollar project, but it actually breaks it down into some very early works parcels with some quantifiable costs associated to that and that that is the only exposure that council has. We'll look to limit that to the council's contribution into this project. So um it it still goes towards the delivery of the project on time. It is within the council's budget and uh and we still are are able to meet timelines. That will, of course, be required to be discussed with Fulton Hogan as to how that might might happen. One of the key things that Fulton Hogan will want to do as soon as they are advised of being the preferred contractor and that our intention to negotiate the contract with them is that they will want to start arranging and putting in place their suppliers. Uh, the supply of the materials is going to be critical in terms of the timeframes uh being achieved that we're looking to be achieved. Um, i- i- if they need to enter into contracts with suppliers for large sums of money, they're not going to want to do that unless they've got actual confirmation of the full uh budget. We are uh we are in, you know, we are Wednesday today. We are very hopeful of having that funding confirmed by this time next week. So I'm confident that we will be able to work that through with Fulton Hogan over the next couple of days in this timeframe and um and negotiating good faith. Um, so I'm 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 confident that that will happen. But if a resolution is passed by council, and I might ask Lisette to get these words up on the screen. So resolution number one there, um, um, at the end of where it says Fulton Hogan, so after the word Hogan, if you put in words, subject to confirmation of required funding being made available by the state and federal governments. So our recommendation to the council is to include those extra words and and that provides you with uh coverage in terms of any exposures.
Thank you.
Sir Knox, further questions?
Um, yes, the development approval that Jodie expressed concerns about on page fifty-three in regard to the asphalt plant, is that in place?
Uh, Jodie, I might pass over to you in terms of um of where we're at with that. Uh, we do, uh, you know, I will say upfront that we are working constructively and positively towards that. And um I'm not aware of any any problems, but Jodie, comments?
Thank you, um, Councilor Knox. We have had some advice um in relation to the Ashvelt plant, that it does require an appro- an approval. Council is exempt from certain developments. Um, and given that the timeframe of this um Ashvelt plant will be in place, we actually exceed what will be um our exemption uh qualification. So we can actually start the works with the exemption in place, but needing to get the E P A's approval, to get the development approval for the Ashvelt plant um once we exceed the sixty days. And we've had advice from from Kelly's um saying that this is a sound way in which we will go forward and and not halt the project. And there is a little bit of um, you know, reputational risk and that the E P A won't be um overly joyed and that this is the process that we're taking, but given the timeframes, there's no way that we would have got this through um without understanding what their plant looked like. Um, and to get an E P A approval, you need to understand that the tonnage is the storage and the machinery they're using, all of those sorts of things. So um eh given that uh level of detail being required, we wouldn't have been able to get an approval if we'd started any earlier.
Thank you. The grooving program, sorry, the grooving of the runway, um, which is proposed, how, is there any um risk from moisture getting in for the sub base through the grooving process?
Uh, the the grooves are approximately six millimetres by six millimetres, so wide by deep. So they're very shallow compared to the asphalt surface, which is about eighty kilometres deep. So it's a it's a very surface, it's a very surface top treatment uh and and it won't compromise the deeper layers in the pavement.
Yeah, I know it doesn't. Um, the total cost that we've got is twenty-nine point nine million. Fulton Hogan's twenty-nine point five million. It doesn't leave very much. Um, and then it says on page eighty-three, one million is needed for various council costs, including technical support and superintendent services. That's more than that point four of a million. Um, and then on page eighty-three, it says we need one point five million in contingencies. Now, these are all little, I'm I'm not opposed to this project, I'm just putting this out there. These are all um could be additional costs to council.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Knox. Um, also refer you to page five, uh, page twelve, sorry, of the um agenda, which is actually in the covering report to the evaluation report and and the data and the information you're reading. Um, through the discussions that we've held and the points of clarification and understanding the alternate offers from Fulton Hogan, we're anticipating an estimated project or contract price, so construction uh cost of twenty-eight point two million dollars.
Sure, okay.
Um, and we have then, in terms of total project costs, included contingencies, superintendent costs, engineering costs, um, council's costs, et cetera, to a total project cost of thirty-one point four million. And so the ask from the state and federal governments is for um um a total grant funding amount of twenty-nine million, which in addition to our two point four five million, will give us the necessary funding for the total project costs.
Yep, thank you. No further questions?
Councilor Porter?
Is it worth making that uh funding being made available, um, including what you were talking about? Essentially, the two two stages, so the early works, is it is it necessary to reference that we're giving approval to say we can Fulton Hogan can go ahead up to two point four five million, which is what council are contributing, subject to the extra funding coming through from state and federal, or is that sufficient?
Um, I'll defer to the chief executive officer, but express my view uh to start off with. I don't think that's necessary. Um, council has already included two point four Um, council has already included two point four five million dollars in this year's budget. So the authorisation to spend monies out of that budget is already in existence. Um, to progress this project, we have been using those funds uh, in terms of the costs achieved to date and, and there have been costs achieved, uh, to date. And so it would be considered that, that inclusion in the budget is authorisation for us to proceed down that path.
I'll just add, I agree, it's not needed. Um, the second part, which is the delegation so CEO to finalise the, the contractual arrangements, that's in the context of that first resolution. If we end up having to look at staging or early works or the like, that will be part of the contract negotiations. But in the context that council has agreed that we award, uh, the work slash contract to Fulton Hogan.
I'll be happy with the recommendation.
Yep, sorry, my apologies, David, um, or councillor Knox. Um, I also wanted to just ask, uh, council to consider one extra, um, uh, resolution. Um, the last, uh, resolution at part three is about keeping this item in confidence, uh, which is, as you can expect, um, uh, a standard recommendation. I wanted to seek a resolution from council that we release this report to the Department of, um, Transport and Infrastructure and Transport, the CEO of Department of Transport and Infrastructure, to support the report that he is sending to cabinet. Um, so given that this clearly documents how robust the process has been, what the evaluation, um, has entailed and what the final numbers are based on the work that we've done. Um, so if I could ask, if, if I can, I'm getting nods around the table. So maybe if I can, um, get Lisette to put a part three in, in, in front of the, what would then become part four? Um, authorize this chief executive officer to provide this report to, shall we just say to the state government? To the state governments, um, to support approval processes, funding approval processes. Thank you.
I'm still happy to move it and in doing so, I'd like to express appreciation for all the work that the administrations put into getting this, uh, this money and that it getting us to the point where we can move forward with this very, very important project. Happy to second that and reinforce councillor Knox's comments. Thank you very much, uh, members. So we have a unique motion on the books. If there's no further discussion, comments, questions, I'll put tho- that motion, those in favour, against, carried unanimously and thank you for your considerations. And certainly I echo both those thoughts. I know the amount of time and effort that's been going in behind the scenes. Uh, and not necessarily all during workouts either. So I do thank our administration led by the CEO and Cathy there and thank Greg. It is fantastic to have expertise like him available to us to ensure that the project goes ahead and we can all celebrate as soon as the state government comes through with their money. Thank you very much. Soon as I see that we got the money, I'm more than happy to grovel. Yeah, thank you. On that basis then, I should move that, that we, uh, we retain that item in confidence. What? I know, I know.
You've done that already.
Right, okay. In that case, at sixteen minutes past nine, I'll declare the meeting closed and thank you for your deliberations.